In town where those could be available, where people could park for more than one night on a street. Or if they can even, if it doesn't block traffic. So if parking an RV would block traffic, it's probably not a good idea to even allow the one night. In my previous document, I did talk about people being able to park in front of their homes to load and unload their RVs for going on trips. Sometimes it takes a little bit to get everything loaded up, and that might be a hardship on them. I do currently have a home in a town where we're having significant trouble with people parking and living in their RVs, and they're not. They're not roadworthy, let alone people worthy. And so that is something that you guys might want to think about for including into your RV policy. Also, just on a funny side note, if for enforcement, you guys are wanting to, a solution for giving people a place to park, if they're not supposed to be parked there, we'd be happy to give out business cards for enforcement to say, this is where you can go. And I'm sure all the RV parks would be willing to do the same. But that's just, I, just a funny thing I thought of. Then in page four.
Ms. Harris, I hate, I hate to interrupt, but we do have a time limit of three minutes, and you're at it. Would you, we appreciate your comments, they're well thought out, would you put those into a document as well so that the planning and zoning and the council can take a look at those?
Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here online that's put up a hand or?
I don't show that anyone else has indicated that they want to make a public comment at this time.
All right, then, can go into the first agenda item, which is the input from Utah Denebakea, a discussion and a vote on selection of a qualified bid to provide architectural services for the Cooperative Cultural Center. I put that on the agenda following several discussions with with Panera Nelson, some follow up with our attorney, Chris McInnany. So an invitation was extended through Chris McInnany's letter to Utah Denebakea, as well as an invitation by the council to join us today to try to finalize the bidding process. The only response from Utah Denebakea that was received that I'm aware of is a response that was copied to us by Janet Sloman, she, which was a letter to her board saying she's working on the directive that the board provide, that the board gave her from the August 13, September 13 meeting, that they should try to find, that she should find legal counsel. Chris McInnany has talked with her on at least one occasion, perhaps two. I was hopeful that Utah Denebakea would accept our invitation and come to this meeting so we could finalize it, but as we do not have any representation here from Utah Denebakea, and no one from the design review committee or the executive director, I'm going to ask that we table this and go into an executive session next Tuesday, which would mean really basically no need to do discussion or action today. Does anybody have a problem with that, or should I just put it into Tuesday with an executive session? So this should make our meeting relatively short today. I put number two, discussion and vote on whether to eliminate the regular meeting, which is scheduled for election night, which is November 5. I didn't know how other people felt, if they wanted to be doing meeting, or did they, would they be preferring to watch kind of what's going on in the national forum, so to speak. I'm fine with doing a meeting, but I also know that there are some people who stay glued to a device throughout the day. So.
My only thought would already be going on, I believe, two weeks with no meeting. Am I correct on that?
You are.
Because we don't have a meeting next Tuesday or the Tuesday after, so I feel like going three weeks without a meeting is a long time to build up.
It is a really hard time, although I kind of like BWW's model, once a month.
No, I, I, I would agree with that too, but not if that means we have a four hour meeting once a month.
Okay.
Then we see how, what you've got lined up to, for the agenda by then.
Or could we meet on the 29th instead of? Because we'd still have a week off with the 22nd, and then if we met on the 29th, then, then meet on the.
We could do that, and we could just move this to the agenda for next week and see how we're feeling about just moving it.
That might help with some of our strategic objectives too, in terms of, we've got some planning and zoning and ordinances and just some stuff that we just kind of need to keep, keep on.
I guess there's no reason we can't make that decision tonight to just take the 5th off the table and, and do it the, what would that be, the 20?
The 29th?
The 29th?
So we've got a week off, and then we'll be back another week off.
The 22nd is the first strategic planning meeting with BWW, and it's four hours, so some of us wouldn't bet I could go either way.
On, on the 22nd?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the 29th, so we don't have a meeting on the 22nd, we have one the first, 8, 15th, and the 29th.
Yeah, she's saying that it won't be a break. She's noting that it won't be a break.
Thank you.
But thank you.
It doesn't, I, I, I'm not going to be, you know, I, I'm not going to be glued to the TV on the 5th either, so.
Are you going to be glued to the, do you want to be glued to the TV on the 5th?
I think we've detected.
No, we hope not.
No, I, since returns don't really come in, I don't start watching until late. I don't mind doing the 5th, but I think it, we could see how next week plays out, and then
Decide next week.
Then decide next week, just because, because there are some things, like Erin pointed out, and this strategic planning, some of the things we've got to get scheduled.
Let's just table that one too, Ben.
Yeah. Well, this was a useful meeting, and.
I should have said this.
Okay, no kidding. When I was doing the agenda, I was, I really thought about that when I was putting out that. This is really a lame, but things come up. Does anybody have any other, other, and then we can adjourn and take a five minute, 10 minute break and come back at 4:30 to do the work session. Any other? I don't have any.
We talked, or the commission or manager had talked about the cleanup days, but there hasn't been any posting of information to the public, or, so I don't know. I mean, I guess we should just, I don't know, check with her.
I don't even remember. I don't remember what date it was either.
Back next week. That's a good one, though. Yet, do we know if it had been communicated at all to any entity?
Not that I'm aware of.
She wanted to do that because it was right before the Arts Festival.
Which is another good kind of other that we should follow up on is for the Arts Festival, now that Huggerson Property Management have parked him out with holes.
Next week.
No, not that I want to make Huggerson Property Management a target, but that piece that was lingering with planning and zoning has been addressed, so he is compliant, and we can use his services, which is great, thank you, Huggerson Property Management. And he's got a beautiful, big machine now, so. Shall we add that to asking?
Is it a grater?
You know, I don't know what it is, it's got some big, it's huge. Tanya Huggerson was sitting in it, I think she's going to cruise the neighborhood or something, but it's really, I don't, I don't know the difference between.
Did it have a blade?
I, I saw it from the side in the back, all I was looking at was that it had a huge seat, and she was a tiny sitting in there.
Blade or, well, you could do it with a bucket, it's, it's a little more difficult to get it even, but, or if he has a drag box, that's helpful too.
Okay, that's what it looks like. He did say he was ready to come back to work and start doing some of these, so he's got something.
Yeah.
It's like multipurpose, maybe.
He's got a front bucket, there might be a blade that goes along with it.
Yeah, he might be able to.
That's a big, that's a big hole.
We'll shift that to.
Yeah, I think, I was just thinking, like, if, if for the cleanup days, like, if we're trying to get volunteers, we probably need to get that out quickly, and as bluff is good about coming together really quickly and stuff. So we think it's the 14th, 15th, or was it this weekend?
No, she was trying to do it on Monday and Tuesday.
It was a Monday, Tuesday, okay. So maybe it's just a, a comment in the minutes that we're looking into it, and we would send out a town email if we're moving forward with that plan. So. She isn't, she just. And then regarding, sorry, I was just gonna say regarding grading, my inclination is that it's probably, we call it the small purchases or micro purchases that could be approved and then retroactively approved by council, so if that doesn't need to be done this week, it can be done.
Perfect. I, just because we shall, we should be making whatever we're talking about public, I just texted the photo I showed to Erin in the event that it can be shown to the public, but we can at least distribute somehow that this is what he's purchased, because I just showed it to council, a couple council members, and I don't know.
Ram a request of the backhoe.
Yeah.
Backhoe photo. Excellent, exciting, okay.
Okay, so if there's no other, that's a good catch, Linda, then it is 4:21.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
And then, yeah, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
For a work session.
Okay, I am turning off the recorder.
While we're on our break, it looks like there might be some audio issues.
Do it again.
Jim Sayers, can you still hear us right now? Kathy, or Craig, Craig, you're on, Craig, can you hear us okay? How's the audio?
Yes, I can hear you, but it's very flawed.
What does flawed mean?
It means I can't understand half the words, they're blurred sort of words. And it might be the microphones, I don't know. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes. When, when Anne talks, can you talk clearly?
I cannot understand what someone just said.
We will troubleshoot.
We will troubleshoot. Hear you just fine.
Hear you just fine.
So Kathy, when I'm speaking, can you still hear me? And is it clear?
Yes, I could hear clearly what you just said.
Beautiful. Melanie, if you wouldn't mind repeating what you just said for Jim Sayers' benefit regarding his audio. Jim, I think you're, are you on a meeting with somebody else? Like, if there were other two computers logged into the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll send a, I'll send a message to the chat function. And then Anne, you can just.
It is 4:31 PM. This is Buck Town Council Work Session. Today is October 8, 2024. Roll call.
Lynn Sosa.
Jennifer Donlon.
Lloyd Hook.
Anne Leppen.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
So the first agenda item is discussion of IT services, and I'll turn that over to Erin Nelson, since she's been one working on this.
All right, so I know we've been talking about IT. I have reached out to six or seven different IT companies, and handful of them won't even consider us just because of our location, and it just isn't probably worth their while. However, I have gotten quotes from three other IT companies, as well as, of course, like, we have our current pricing for networks. And honestly, all of them are pretty much in the same ballpark in terms of what we are going to end up paying at the end of the day. It's probably going to come down to where we think we're going to get the best service. And so the last one that I spoke with actually today was one that both Britt and Luann, through different avenues, had reached out and contacted, and so I did get some pricing there. I think the, you know, I was certainly hoping to save us a little bit of money, this is a really, you know, this is an expensive line item for a municipality of our size, but also we do have eight devices now, eight, we have eight laptops, we have multiple desktops, we have a firewall, and so as I said, I think this is just going to come down to where we think we're going to get the best service. In speaking with the folks today, I do feel as though they would be able to provide a high level of service, they have a, or they have a location in Moab, but then they have nationwide support, so they've got, you know, centers all over the US, so you're probably not going to get them the same technician every time, but you do have an account manager who's in Utah, who knows, you know, knows the area, which is helpful. The other one, and so that is Cinch IT. The other one that I spoke with that I was really impressed with their understanding, and he's been very diligent and respectful about follow up and ensuring that, you know, he's just been very on top of it, was Galaxy IT. And so I think what I'm going to do is put together a comparison of both, Cinch needs to get me like a full official, you know, proposal, I have the overarching approximate costs, and, but I'll do a side by side for you all to take a look at. Galaxy also, they're in Utah, it's a little bit further for them to get down here, but based on our price point, we are looking for someone who's going to pretty much be remote, we are not expecting them to be onsite all the time, once you do that, it almost doubles for all of these. The pricing structures are really similar, and the price, you know, if you're saying, we want you, yeah, the price almost doubles. So I will get all of that, I'll do a side, a side comparison, and probably throw Netforce in there too, so you can see that. As I said, I think, I think the pricing is going to be pretty similar. So we're not necessarily saving money, but maybe saving headache would probably be the best way to talk about this. And none of the companies seem concerned about moving to the .gov domain. I was really impressed with the conversation I had today regarding like automatic daily backups to a cloud server, because that's something that we just have never, you know, in terms of like being able to back up our data, that's really critical, that if one of our devices goes down, we can still access stuff. And then I was also really impressed with the conversation regarding how the actual transition from our current provider to a new provider would take place, and, you know, I, I think that's an area that I'm feeling a little bit nervous about in terms of, you know, saying, hey, you know, we're no longer doing this. There's a lot of sensitive information that does need to transfer over, and so I will include, you know, a synopsis of that for, for this provider that I talked to today. Yeah, so I'll, I'll get all that ready, and I feel pretty confident that, you know, Netforce, I, we have not signed another contract with them, we're not intending to. Neither of the providers, if I'm recalling correctly, it's been a couple weeks since I've talked to a few of these guys, would lock us into annual contracts, it would be month by month. But, for example, the firm I talked to today, they said, but that's our opportunity to earn your business month after month, right? Like, we're not going to lock you into a contract, but we want to prove that you're going to come back to, you know, we want to prove that we are the provider that you want to come back to month after month. So pros and cons to that, I think, you know, it's, it's pretty difficult for an IT service provider to be like, you know, this is your problem, go deal with it. But I will get all of that ready, I just wanted to get a sense if there were other questions the council had, any other companies that folks have reached out to, or thoughts about this transition. Again, I would push that this needs to happen here pretty quickly, so my hope would be that maybe not by next meeting, but certainly that first meeting in November, we select someone and then can move forward with getting the transition done before the end of the year.
Go ahead, Brooke.
My question is, this Cinch IT is in the lab, and Galaxy is further away. So they're not going to come here, but if we needed to go to them, would there be somebody in the lab to go to, or are they just kind of like not there either?
Nope, so there, there would be someone to go to as well, and they, so we would have an account manager who's actually out in St. George, but the engineer is up in the lab, so, you know, we could drop off devices. The one thing that I really liked about Cinch though, was that he said that they don't have, they don't bill for travel time, they just give you an hourly rate, and if they need to come down, they can come down. The one thing that was, you know, just as we're doing our considerations, they don't currently have any municipal clients in Utah, which is, that could be something that we want to take a look at. Now, that said, there are a lot of other industries with much higher security needs than, than a municipality, but also, you know, if you don't know what governments need, that can be a concern, that they don't charge for travel time, they do have just an hourly rate, which is on par with all the other hourly rates that I have seen, which is looking, starting about 112.5 an hour.
They probably charge that for travel.
No, 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 so all, so the other ones, they charge for travel, and then they, yeah, so they charge you for the travel, and they charge you for the hourly, and these guys will only charge for the hour.
And so when, in talking to them, are they both able to provide the discovery requests that we need to have done?
So because of the, so this is an interesting one, so because of the subscription that we currently have in Microsoft, it's actually Microsoft that has that functionality, so they don't have a second, a secondary search function, but I don't think Netforce does either, I think they just use Microsoft's, and to be frank, not well, like, based on our previous grammar requests, they're not. So I can definitely ask if they have a secondary way to, to do that. The one I did talk to today said for emails specifically, they have some additional email security features, including a malware blocker that I can guarantee we don't have right now, as well as archiving and encryption. And so we would want to talk about encryption. I know the state of Utah is pretty lax on the things we have to do as a municipality versus what we know internally, what we should be doing or needing to do. Encryption, I don't know how that works, whether municipalities are allowed to encrypt their emails or not. But just in, in him talking about it, they do have additional funk, there are additional features that we don't currently have that could improve our security, but I will absolutely ask about the grammar requests of all of these that we presented. But I will absolutely ask about the grammar requests of all of these that we presented. Grammar and discovery.
Erin, I have one more question. Like, this Cinch IT is national. Do they have any municipal accounts nationally?
I didn't ask that question, but I will.
Because that would be the way they could, you know, adjust their guys. If they don't have any, then.
So what is encryption?
Encryption is, I said, it's another level of security that is essentially, I'm starting to say this, and there are IT people online right now. That's so wrong. I don't want to say like it scrambles the data, but it's essentially like a shield of the data that's being sent. So banks, banks, almost every single banking organization is going to have some form of encryption. But I need to check for us whether we're allowed to have that, and are there, if there are, you know, client, or, you know, emails to the public that like we wouldn't want encrypted versus would want encrypted. Would we be able to turn off encryption if we don't want it? But it's essentially using like algorithms to like protect the data once it's transferred out of our, out of our.
And wow, only, only people that can read the encryption.
So you have to have another password, basically, to be able to see the email?
And again, like, that's the thing, right? Like, can we turn it off for most things, but turn it on for the sensitive stuff that like is going to federal government or transferring data information, or, or, or?
Attorney-client privilege.
Yeah, that one.
Well, I asked a question because that was still, sorry, way over my head about what it means. I just know that I see it on different documents, but I know I do what it is. Nor do I really care. If we need it, we'll have it. That will be my vote. If we need it, I'll vote for it. Anything else on the IT? Anybody have any other questions or thoughts? So when do you want to try to bring this back?
I'll see what I can get, hold up. If they, if he's able to get me the, if the gentleman today is able to get me like a formal proposal this week, then I can get you the side-by-side comparisons for next week's meeting. And then the gentleman through Galaxy IT did say that the rates are good. Again, he's been very responsive. I've been very impressed with his level of detail, clearly the good client relations, which I really appreciate. And I think, I think it looks a little worth, worth a fair shot. I think it's just going to come down to like location. And I do think that you should evaluate the total overall cost, because this is a very expensive service. So, yeah, we'll try for next week.
Okay, that's good. I know that, at least from my thinking, it's probably good to have everything ready to roll when we have to switch to the .gov and any computer changes that we have. The number two is the early voter, voting information. Erin, do you have a list of those dates with you?
Yes. So here at the Bluff Community Center, we were able to secure two early in-person voting days. So that's going to be this Thursday, October 10th. It's Thursday, October 10th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, as well as Thursday, October 17th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Those are the only days that we have at this facility, but the county does have quite a number of early voting days throughout the county and at neighboring communities. So all of that information can be found on the San Juan County website. As of this time, I am not seeing that we will have Bluff. Bluff is not a voting location on November 5th. But we do have a ballot drop-off. So if you have your ballot, and make sure you receive it in the mail, you can drop it off in our town offices. We, I was kicking around like when we should say those are available. It is available Monday through Friday. We do have some varying degrees of coverage here in the office, especially like on Wednesdays. So if we want coverage for the four days, we should talk about that. Or if we say, you know, these are our standard hours, you know, nine to five, Monday through Friday, and then we can get coverage through there, we can do that.
Okay, so I, I think it's important that we be able to provide it five days a week from like nine to five, which would include Wednesdays. And what we tried before that did work is everybody volunteering to take a chunk of time to be here. So that if, on Wed, because on Wednesdays, that should be Erin's day off, which unfortunately Erin doesn't always get Wednesday off. But I think what we should all do is look at our calendars and figure out who can be here on Wednesday, which would be starting next, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And we've got four Wednesdays until the elections. So it's not as bad as some years where it's like two months straight, it feels like. But yeah, so starting tomorrow, Wednesdays from nine to five. And then, you know, it is nice, we've got nicely renovated offices. And I, you know, Melanie and I can coordinate about like lunch coverage and things like that. But I would say for the general public, you know, weird off chance, you know, we'll post something to the door, like be back in five. But I think nine to five, Monday through Friday, is more than reasonable. And I am grateful to the county for working with us to get all of this situated, because originally we weren't, Bluff was not anywhere on their list, and, and that was a huge concern for us.
And are we on the website now for the county?
We are not yet on their flyer. I figured I would give, I'll send a message tonight. But no, we are not yet on the flyer.
And then when Duncan Lyman, Lyman Duncan, she dropped off the ballot box, which is in the back in the hallway. Erin and I heard two different versions of when that box would be picked up. And I have confirmed in writing with him that the box will not be picked up until end of the day, eight o'clock on the fifth voting day. Now, that being said, I would not want anybody to wait till 7:55 to come in and vote and drop your ballot. Well, not vote, yeah, drop your ballot. So the ballot box is here. We'll try to have someone here between nine and five, five days a week, Monday through Friday. But if you're mailing your ballot in, it has to be postmarked the fourth, which means taking it to our post office means it has to be there before noon and handing it to the postmaster, making sure it's getting stamped the fourth. If it's stamped the fifth, for some reason, it doesn't count it. And I would say, try to get your ballot dropped off here. I would say no later than three o'clock in the afternoon on the fifth, in the event that they change the policy of when they're picking it up, as they have done the last two years, and the ballot box leaves, and we have to tell you to go to Monizuma Creek or Annaphe or wherever.
The only other thing I was going to say, if you Google "San Juan County elections", there's still a lot of information from past years, including last year's, like, super late, like, November 21st voting day. I don't remember if you all remember that, but yeah, that. So just if folks are looking for stuff online, I would always put in the year, because as I have been trying to get all this coordinated, there's just, past information is not removed. So just make sure you're looking at the appropriate year.
And make sure you're signing your ballot and putting your name or your email address or your phone number, so that if you have something goofy, the county can contact you.
And one last thing, Town of Bluff, Bluff in general, we are not the elections organizing entity. I highly encourage people to reach out directly to San Juan County or to the Lieutenant Governor's Office, Elections Office. If they have questions, we are here, we are willing to provide a drop-off location. We are not in charge of the election, and I hope that is clear.
And this year, there are no Bluff.
Nothing Bluff.
Yeah, no Bluff candidates, there are no Bluff offices running.
Yeah, I think it's, it's really important to follow up if you didn't get your ballot in your mailbox this week. Follow up with the county and find out why you didn't. Then, if there's nothing else, moving to discussion and update on Dark Skies. So where we are at with that, on our application process, is. So on the timeline that we had worked on, the memorandum of understanding has now been signed by Bear's Years Partnership. So we have a memorandum of understanding. Diana Davidson, Sarah Barack, been working to get this to a graphic designer, doing some minor changes. Some photos still need to be taken by Sarah Barack to do the before and after photos of, I assume, lighting and that type of thing. And the education piece as well, on its way, as it has been the last couple of years. Though we're still on, you know, kind of the track to get the final draft application in. And I say final draft, because I don't know if it's the draft we have to send in or if it's the final, final piece, but by the end of the year. We're still on track for that. And so thank you to Bear's Years Partnership, and of course to Diana Davidson for all her work. And I'm figuring that Sarah and I will touch base probably in the next couple of weeks just to see where that draft, graphic stuff is at. And then we'll have everybody look at it, make sure it looks good.
I know that there are elements of the application which require, like, the town as the sponsoring agency, essentially. I don't know if that's the right term, but like, we need to write letters, or like, there needs to be a letter of support. And then there are supposed to be like materials, like brochures or flyers or elements that are available to the public from an educational standpoint. And a huge thanks to Bear's Years as a partnership, as well as Sarah, for doing so much of that stuff ongoing. But do you know where any of that is? Is there anything that like we, as the town, can be doing to help support that effort?
So the first thing that needed to be, well, I'm looking at the list of the application package that Sarah put together. So I have already provided, a month before they needed it, the map of the town. So the map of town boundaries has been, has been provided. We, I think we still need to do the letter of support. But Sarah and Diana were working on letters of support from the BLM. And I don't know the acronym, NABR. Does anybody know what that acronym is? It could be. And I understand, I think the business owners of Bluff have done theirs. I thought we would wait to get ours done when they're getting ready to have us approve the graphics, so that we can say, kind of looked at the application handling graphics that go in. We have our ordinance for exterior lighting done. Planning and zoning needs to put together examples of new construction that's in compliance. I should follow up with planning and zoning on that. We needed to do a wording of what we wanted to call this, while the Dark Sky community was, seemed to be the consistent one that is used. The goal was to have everything to the graphic designer by the end of September and the first draft ready by October 4th. But I think it's probably going to be about two weeks or so before we'll get to that. But we're on track. I assume, and I shouldn't assume it, but I'm assuming that there's a form letter that we can use for, the letter of support from us. But it also would be other elected officials, which would mean reaching out to other communities probably to try to get a couple of letters of support. Moab, which stuns me, is a Dark Sky community. And I'm sure the mayor of Moab would write something. So now that would be one reach out. Get a couple of these. We're, well, I shouldn't say we, because a lot of the work has been done by Bear's Years Partnership and Sarah in particular, but it's moving, and she did a great job at the timeline.
One clarifying question. So I know like the Dark Sky community designation that we're seeking, I say we as Bluff are seeking. Is it going to be filed under the town's name or under Bear's Years Partnership's name?
I believe it gets filed under our name. Which is, I'm like, I'm 90-plus percent, certainly goes under our name, where the applicant.
Yeah, we've got the ordinance. They were just, in their, in the MOU, said that they could advertise out that they helped get this done.
Got it, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so I think probably by the next work session, should be able to bring the graphics and the application to take a look at. And we're on track. Any other questions or thoughts? So this kind of segues into number four, which is the strategic plan updates from council members. I've been working with Beth and not so much with Diana on this, but working and trying to move Dark Skies along to, as part of our strategic plan. And then the other thing that, I put some time on this last week, is on the Soul Source application for water. Britt and I have been working on it. We've got a draft application moving, made some revisions from that first draft that was given to us. And then next week, Britt and I are going to meet and look at some of the more specific pieces for the Town of Bluff, because one of the attachments will be the 2020 water study. Then there are some other specific things that we'll have to piece into this, but it's, we're moving. So my hope would be to have something to the EPA by the end of the calendar year. It's not a particularly complex application, but it, because 100% of our water source comes from one kind of general area, we don't have to have, you know, be split up in multiple districts. So who would like to talk about what they've accomplished in the strategic plan? And if anybody needs to look at a paper copy I actually have, to see what you committed to.
Can I go real quick, because mine's pretty simple? Last week was on Bear's Years' call, and then they released the draft RMP on Friday. And I picked through it a little bit, but it was a weekend. And it's a huge document, so. But in general, looking at the certain, some stuff quickly that I was worried about, it's all looking pretty good so far, but I'll keep digging in first from some other town folks that have looked through, that it's looking good for them. And they are more hawkish about certain things than I am. So it's been pretty good, but that's all I've been working on so far.
And Chris?
Yeah, what, what I've been working on is the, the highway trail, all the bicycle pedestrian trail. They do have that grant to come and design our stretch and plan from one of the valley clear to Monizuma Creek. We haven't seen anybody on, anywhere in the area yet. Molly was going to reach out to Stephanie Tomlin and see if we've got, she's the new director of the, of the project, and see, you know, what their timeline's looking like. We haven't heard anything new, so. No update at this point, other than that.
It's important.
So Melanie and I are still working together on bookkeeping. And so new things come up at different times of the year. This is the end of, September was the end of the quarter, so she's working on the quarterly reports that go to the state, the feds, and workforce services.
Well, I've been working, well, trying to work with CCC. We're kind of at a standstill, as you all know. Hopefully that's resolved, or at least, I'm not going to say resolved, because it's not going to be resolved, but hopefully we have a clearer path of moving forward within the next week on that one. I also, I don't remember if.
I also, I don't remember if I talked about this last work session or not, but I talked with Ann and Sarah Barak about the possible creation of a Dark Sky Park at the Barwell property. I think that's maybe an inch, I had some interesting thoughts about that after the Utah League of Government and Towns, whatever. I'm never going to get that name right. Cities and towns. But I thought that might be an interesting avenue to try to pursue, both with the dissolvement of the Discovery Center in Monticello, which has a lot of Dark Sky viewing equipment. Wondering if maybe that was something that we could work together with Bev on acquiring and maybe moving some telescopes down here and starting kind of a Dark Sky evening viewing program based at the Barwell, which is.
Is it dark enough there?
I think it is. I, I say that remembering when we did one of our dark, one of our Dark Sky Walk things, that when we were doing the light metering, the darkest place that we had was the elementary school. I also think that in strategically kind of placing that there, A, because it's close to, to the beak, but B, also because it would kind of push a night program that we could say, hey, would you mind, you know, to, to some of the businesses, the road sheds, some things like that, if we actually had an actual goal of any way that we can tone these lights down because it affects our Night Sky Viewing Program.
And I think Sarah's done it, been from like the back of the beach and it was okay even there.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I, I just thought that might be an interesting thing to do with Barwell property. That helps improve the, the property and helps with the Dark Sky stuff, giving us something to do in the evenings. In the, in the summer, it would be a late program, but we don't necessarily have to do total dark. You know, there's, there's some different other astronomy type things that we could do for a program, just for visitors that are coming into the area. So I think it could kind of check a lot of boxes in a lot of different areas. But so Sarah was waiting to hear, and I think they still kind of are waiting to hear what the status was with the Discovery Center. But, you know, it would be fun to move forward. And we're still working on, although we haven't had a meeting, I need to remind them of that, the Dark Sky Festival in February. Bob was trying to kind of move that one along, so. I don't know what else I'd want on that list. Oh, strategic planning is coming up for Water Works, so that's on the list as well. So there's three of us that are involved with that.
And I have a question that, I believe in our UDB agreement that we're supposed to keep the DRC meeting working together.
Yes, that is, that is a part of the agreement.
Yeah.
However, you have to come to the table and actually bring something with you. Well, I, while I really like people on the DRC and I'm sure Britt and I like each other as well, all of us wasting our time.
Unless you can use that as a meeting.
Yes, yes. We've canceled it up the last three or four weeks because there is no communication from your DB. So.
So it's still scheduled, maybe this group is still scheduled.
And do what? Come and sit and stare at each other?
Just a question.
See, I got the impression that, whatnot impression, they may not talk until they told. And they haven't got a lawyer, so at the end, honestly, it's been frustrating because they haven't brought their part of the DRC to the table, meeting at the meeting by having two people there. So, I don't know. Like Malia, can you, you offer to cancel?
I, I don't think there's any reason to meet until we go for mediation. I think that we are spending time, money and resources. And unless we get someone in who can really help us identify how to move forward in a productive way, it is not a good use of town resources. And I feel very strongly about that.
Unless we hear from them and they want it.
If they were to come, I mean, and, and there was, for the public to know, there was an open invitation for them to show up today to our town council meeting to talk about this building, they did not do so.
It wasn't just an open invitation, it was a strong recommendation.
Yeah.
From our legal counsel that they attend the meeting today and.
Yeah, and they did not do the crickets.
And after we talk to Chris, I'm fine with us meeting or whatever to talk about anything we can do.
And I have one other question. What have, what did we decide about the noise ordinance, planning and zoning had asked, I think, because I know it's in our strategic planning. And I thought it was going to be in our our hearing when we were compiling them all together. But did I misremember that?
So the noise ordinance, if I remember correctly, planning zoning was on the fences to whether or not to do it because that's a nuisance and that really falls on the council to do. If we're talking about a noise ordinance that specifically jake breaking, that isn't easy one. I mean, that could be done in half an hour and stuck into the public hearing. Same with the unleashed animals that are causing chaos. Those two can literally be done in half an hour each. If you're talking about a noise ordinance where we're talking about decibels of vehicles, motorcycles, so those types of things, that's going to require, well, not probably, it's going to require more detail work from her attorney than just doing the quick.
So should we put the jake break one in on this next one and we can always expand on it as needed later?
I can certainly write both of those. I planned on writing the dangerous dog paragraph. I planned on getting to that next week, so I could just throw this in on it. And, you know, we really hear the jake breaks, Riley, because they start at the top of that hill and it comes right on down, so. If that's all we're talking about for a noise ordinance and, and that's really doesn't fall within planning zonings.
No.
And that's enforced still.
It is. That is enforceable by the deputies.
Put the signs back up and then, then they know.
Well, I think the sign, isn't the sign still up as you come down the canyon?
I think they come down. I know, maybe I'm just riding right by him, but I don't think they're there.
Yeah, well, when you drive it multiple times a day. Well, west of town, it's there.
It is coming into town, west of town.
Yeah. For some reason, I didn't think the signs came down when UDL was pulling signs after incorporation. But either way, we can get the signs up there once we have the ordinance and they will enforce it. And that's the enforcement piece. We just have to have the ordinance. We don't have to enforce it. The dog one will require a trip to the sheriff's department and a meeting with the sheriff. I'll try to get that set up. Anything else on the strategic plan? Moving to other than, while I was trying to warm up walking around between the medians, I saw the sign on the senior center that says there are flu shots 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. next Tuesday the 15th here at the senior center. So you don't even need to make an appointment with the clinic, you can just come to the senior center and get your flu shot.
They usually give you a little something too. The little hoodie bag or something. So just so you know.
And then on the, the roads, which Thomas, and so did Thomas, Colin, he's willing to help us do the sign inventory and put them all on, make a map with Googler. And then he'll make a Excel sheet as long as we can get it approved through on the road spending or if we have to go to another meeting. But he's willing and available and very reasonable and knows exactly what, you know, what I wanted. So I was.
So Lou, why aren't you and Michael and I try to get a meeting next week? And try and nail some of this down. Anybody have any other, other?
Do we have a way that we could get updates on the 162 road construction? Like the way we do on the Highway 95, which doesn't really affect us, but 162 certainly does. You have to sit there for 20 minutes when you're trying to go to the mission, it's like, um, okay.
There is a website that people can sign up for that posts, I believe, daily.
I don't know how I got on it for the Highway 95. But I get updates for that all the time.
And I have no idea how it works. It could, okay, so I will, it gives me a good chance to give Jared Beard a call. I haven't talked to him in quite a long time, so I'll give him a call and ask him what we have to do, and that's 62.
162. And I'm, well, it also affects, because the other day when I was sitting there, I was like, oh, I'll just, I'll just turn around and go around. And then we passed it and they're also stopping on the cutoff road, which is which is 191.
The 262 that goes along to the creek or?
No, the one, no, the, the Bluff Bench, which is 191N.
No, it is, it's just the Bluff Bench road.
All right, I got, I got it. So to receive weekly construction updates, please contact the public information team at the email address, which is and enter weekly updates in the subject line. Got all that, Melanie? For our minutes? You're the best. Yeah, so you, you have to email them.
Okay.
And then they add you to the list or whatever. However, I still think we should talk to UDL about a variety of things, including that, the fact that they keep stopping traffic and there's no construction actually going on, which is incredibly concerning for our commuters as well as the marathon.
Isn't it surveying kind of stuff right now, which is why you don't see anything? Well, they've been doing covert work, I know that.
Every time I drive by.
I just, I just can't imagine if you live out there, you know, and, you know, my sister lives out there. The school kids still are getting on and off the bus out there.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Anything else? 5:13.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm turning off the recorder. Thank you, everybody.